Don't matter to the honor, alternate. Adrian Howard, regular member. The April Wiltshire, alternate member. Andrew Morrisette, regular member. Jan Rice, alternate member. Steve Ward, regular member. Myself, Frank Zach, regular member. Uh, there's your boy, this is our reporting secretary. Now, tonight is a, among other things on our agenda, we have a continuating table of matter coming for an appeal by the Central Cycle Club of the zoning officer's cease and desist order. We're gonna take that up out of order because some people have a lot of things to do. Besides, this is our man, it's welcome to listen to our man, it's all the same. Let me take it. So at this point in time, I'm gonna open the public hearing. We open the public hearing, open the public hearing. And I believe at this point, it is the, uh, it is the appellant who gets the right to speak first.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Bill McCoy. I'm a partner in firm of Howard McCoy. My office address is 736 George, and my return bike comes from Connecticut. I represent the Central Cycle Club, man. This is an appeal of a cease and desist decision by certain enforcement officer Brian Bray and certain property of K A Lane. I'm sorry, South K A Lane. And in a nutshell, the issue is the use of a particular lot which is adjacent to closed track, which has been in existence for a number of years. On October 29th, I sent a memorandum to the commission. And I assume that that is in the public record at this point.
Open that again, please.
It's a memorandum authored by me dated October 29th, 2022. So I'm a letterhead of Howard Howard. It was probably received a couple of days back.
That was the request until tonight?
Well, it also included, there was a letter in which I outlined the reasons why this, this decision should be appealed. I have copies of it, but it was mailed on October 29th.
Can you just give, or excuse me, once you give that to me, I'll get. If you give me a second?
If you, if you don't like, if you can give me back one of those, what I had on my own.
Oh, I thought it was the whole stack.
It's too basic.
So what is he saying? You want us to go into correspondence, or you'd like to?
There should be an exhibit in here. I think it's important for the board to stand a couple of times. This hearing is a result of a cease and desist order issued by Mr. Bray. And he and I obviously had conversations leading up to this. But what simply is our position that the club has a pre-existing use which should be honored and nullifies the cease and desist order. And I go through that in some detail. In 1968, the club leased property from gentleman Benjamin Jurstrow. And that's essentially when Track acquired what I'll refer to as its parking lot, which, which has been in use since that time. The club purchased the property in the seventies, but it was used continuously from 68 through 73 for that entire period of time. For a brief period of time, about five years, from 73 to 78, the lot was owned by Mr. Jurstrow, who was not actively used for parking, but was used for parking for a amount of time. Then in 1979, the club actually purchased the parking lot and has used it continuously since that time. And they purchased another lot adjacent to it in 1999 through San Burgo. So what you have here is, and there are a number of people here to testify tonight from their personal knowledge of the use of this property during the sixties, seventies, eighties, nineties, as to the use of this property was made of by the club in support of their track. The track without question is, is a use that is zoning compliant. The sole question is whether this adjacent lot and its use is also zoning compliant by virtue of its longstanding use. Let me put it to you this way. The, the parking is, I think, without question. And I think Mr. Bray's will acknowledge that the parking is absolutely legitimate. The sole question is, is the use of campers on the lot and the staging of motorcycles. Is that legitimate and is that zoning compliant? That use has continued for several decades without any enforcement action at all by the town. And the town was well aware of that use during that entire period of time. I've cited in my memorandum a couple of, a couple of legal theories that apply. One of them is what's called equitable acquiescence, which is when the town accepts and adopts as valid a use, it loses the ability to then enforce or claim for equitable reasons that it's no longer valid use. A lie to that is a concept called latches, which is a similar concept, that if you allow something to occur over a substantial period of time, you lose the enforcement ability. It is our position legally that that is the status of this lot. I think it is important for you to hear from the audience about their personal observations of use over that period of time. Because we're talking about a period of approximately 45 years. This only came to a head, my understanding is in 19, I'm sorry, 2021, when a complaint was made. And then in 2022, when Mr. Bray went after the property with members of the club to try and, we'll call it negotiate a resolution. But there was no activity of enforcement between 68 and 2021. And the only enforcement in 2022, the only official enforcement is the cease and desist letter that we are now fielding. I brought with me tonight Mike Mercer, who is a member of the club, who has a longstanding understanding of this. And I'd ask if you would listen again and hear him on his personal observations.
Please excuse me for not standing up. I have some issues. I've been a member since 1969. We have made every effort to get everyone who shows up at our events to park on our property. We want them off of the roads, off of the highways. But we do everything I can to make sure that the safety of the pedestrians and safety in general is adhered to. So we try to get maximum use out of our pieces of property. We've always used that particular property in question without any known restrictions to us, without any limitations. We've never discriminated between members or non-members or spectators from use of that property. It's basically a first come, first served. Until the space ran out in one location, we would put people in a different location. I have handouts that I don't know if you have them already, but I prepared packets of information that have photographs from, I have an aerial photograph from 1989 that without question shows the lot is used for camping and for motorcycle staging. There's a second photograph in that next page. It's a blow up of the corner of that photograph that shows the date of June of 1989. I also included in that package statements from a number of people who go back to 1975 that attest to the fact that that lot has been used, as I stated, for members, non-members, and spectator use. I would be glad to read some of those statements for you. They're included in a packet for you. I'll offer to read all of them, some of them, none of them, if you wish. A lot of those people are here. If you want, you can hear from them directly. I also have some statements that are in that packet from people who are not able to make it tonight. If you want to hear from all of those, those that are not here tonight, I will gladly read their statements for them.
At this point in time, first off, the absence of West Hock and April Wiltshire will be a problem for them tonight. I think with as enough people here, they can speak their opinions wide. And if you think that it's necessary to add speakers, even not here, which? I'm sure everybody down there, if I'm looking at, there's going to be people there. So it'll be enough, whatever people want to be. And other people, I'd rather have the wide voice here in case anybody has to leave.
Mr. Chairman, I would, again, William McCoy, the director. I will give you the packet that might refer to with the photos, right? But I tend to agree with you that you have people here that want to talk to themselves, and that's probably the most appropriate thing.
The Secretary General will receive this as an exhibit. So Jake, can you please, can you please read your statement?
So you mean?
Okay. My name is John Jacob. I have served as president of Central Cycle Club for 10 years between 1997 and 2010. I have also served as secretary and chairman of the board of trustees for more than 10 years. I'm still on the board of trustees, and it's gone close to 30 years now. I have continued to be active in club activities. At no time until August 20th, 2021, was the club aware of any use restrictions on the upper lot in question. At that time, I agreed verbally to certain restrictions at the request of the zoning officer who reacted to a neighbor's complaint. And zoning officer is here now, and so is the first selection. All right? We all met in that upper lot. To my knowledge, the club never received any correspondence relating to that verbal agreement. It was on August 20th of 2021, restrictions in the August 2022 zoning letter to the club are the first discriminatory restrictions known to us. My recollection of the verbal agreement from August 20th, 21st differs greatly from the zoning letter stated. Have I seen proposed agreements in 2021, I would have immediately objected to the statements restricting in the zoning letter. Throughout my entire tenure with the CCC, there has never been any restrictions or sanctions or discriminations imposed on the use of this lot. Now, our lawyer told me to keep this short and brief, and I can take you people all the way back to Roland Gentstrom, who owned that property before it was even part of the club. Now, I can go through the history of the club, but you people don't have enough time here. I'll tell you straight out. Because I've been involved with three of the lawsuits going from Gentstrom's property to Gallagher's property to the road going in being a private road or a private right of way or a town road. All right? I've been to court over all of those. And like I said, anytime anybody wants to sit down and spend a couple hours starting from day one, I'd be more than happy to sit with you and go through all that. Because I was friends with the Gentstroms. I was friends with the daughter of the Gentstroms, who was a partner of mine, Danny Whitehouse, that I used to ride with. And Linda Gentstrom, which is Roland's daughter, is the one that got me to go to their house and sit down and talk to them so we could have some kind of understanding with everything. But like I say, anytime anybody wants to sit down and go through this, give me a couple hours and I'll stop from the true story. Thank you.
So some of the other people are here to have a statement in here yet. But can you please come up? Is there anyone right there?
My bill, I've been a member of the club 25-plus years. I've been camping up that upper field since 2001, so present time, and probably five years prior to being here.
Others?
Hello, my name is Nick O'Neil. I've been a member of Central Cycle Club since 2014. In my time as a member, I've attended and competed in many club events and race weekends. On numerous occasions through the years 2010 through 2022, I would park my race trailer or race van in the upper field and riding before a race weekend or club event in order to reserve my pit area or campsite for Saturday and Sunday. Oftentimes, there'd be other racers and families utilizing the upper field for their pit areas and campsites. And whenever I pitted and camped in the upper field, I'd always make sure to be respectful to the neighbors.
Anybody else?
Hi folks, thanks for listening. Bill Ainsworth, I've been a member for 20 years.
Name, sir?
Bill Ainsworth, A-I-N-S-T-R-O. Been a member for 20 years. My two sons grew up racing pro level. And because of that track, it's kept us together. And we camped around that upper area for that 20 years. And that kept us all together. Fucking sick.
Good evening, my name is Paul Blandy. Been a member of Central Cycle since 1995. Actively from 95 to early 2000s, I was riding down there doing a lot of work for work parties and very active in the club. And I do remember parking up top, camping up top. And there was bikes up there. I do remember that very well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yep. Good evening, my name is Daniel St. Brent. I joined the club back in 2003. 2010, my son, my first son was born. At that time, we used to park in the upper parking lot. I'd stay away from the track a little bit, because it was a little bit quieter. That's where we spent most of our time for the last, say 12, 13 years camping out there. I've been at the front table since 2019. I've been present for the '21 and '22 season. So just regulation with my time that we have spent using that upper parking lot.
So?
Hi, my name is Kate Vanant. I've been a member officially since 2016. But I had the rep of the club, my first race was at 16-month-old. I was up at the upper lot, I'd have a cup, pink cup there with these two. I mean, every Saturday and Sunday there were races during the summer. I was there, like, that was my whole life. I've never seen any problems up top. It's nice, it's a little bit more quieter away from all the track and all the, like, it was, um, state law, it's a little bit away from all the craziness. So it was used. Made a lot of memories from a lot of those.
How are you? Tim Straviska, I've been a member since '87. I was an officer in the early 90s. Not as active as much now as I used to be, but since I joined in '87, we've always used that upper field to one degree or another, either for overflow parking or like camping for our own events or whatnot. I mean, the races have gotten bigger over the years, so we kind of ran out of space in the lower section. So we kind of need that property for parking. We try to belong with the neighbors the best we can, we always have. So hopefully we can come to some common ground here. And we definitely have to use it, since I've been a member since 1987. Thank you.
My name is, my name is Donald Wych, and I've been president of Central Cycle Club in '92, '03, and '04. And I joined in 1984. And we've used that club lot, that upper lot, since then forever. I mean, for all kinds of things, parking, camping. And I'd just hate to see that taken away from us because of the fact that we needed it. And we're not causing any trouble. We're just trying to have, kind of racist. With W-I-C-H, Donald Wych. Thank you.
My name is Tim Shaper. As a non-member, my family uses Central Cycle Club upper lot as a race participant in 2001 for a hair scramble event. And from 2000 to 2003, we camped there for multiple NESC or cross events.
My name's Ken St. Dave, I am running up 2012. 2013, I was groundskeeper, and we were actively going up there using it for camping. Viper stays up there, I was a vice president from 2014, '15, and '16. And a club president from 2017, '18, and '19. And the first effort was not getting a lot of people. There would have been approximately June of 2021. That's the first ever for that we shouldn't be up there, or we were asked not to be up there. In the years I was president, vice president, we've done the best we could to keep it quiet, keep it civil. Most of the times, families up there, it's a little bit quieter, a little, a little bit away from the park from the track and the racing. Myself, I kept up there the entire time too. And I was actually surprised when we heard, what's it, June of 2021? They took them, I was kind of surprised that came out.
And that's where you were asked not to be up there?
I think it was June of '21, yeah. That Jake had, with them, during one of the races. It's okay. Thank you.
Hello? My name is Jesse Mercer. Joined the club back in '98, ex-vice president, president. I've been hanging around the club for about 42 years now. My old man's a life member. And I can remember vividly being six, seven years old, riding my bicycle in that upper lot on race day, just to be away from the crowds. Me and a little Tim Borkwood used to ride, we had trails all through the woods in that part of the lot. And that's where we'd spend our race days, up in that upper field. There were people camping, there was dirt bikes. And, you know, it's been used ever since I can remember, to be a little good. And we'd like to keep it that way.
My name's Dr. Palmerlove. Been a member for about six years now. I think it does matter a little bit. It's not something that's used every weekend or, you know, all the time. Literally, the one time I see it used is when you have events, which is a few times a year. Again, that's the quietest spot. Everyone tries to be respectful. We have our own small restrictions up there. We definitely try to, you know, please anyone, do anything, and that is recommended to us. It's obvious it's been used for years, you know? But the biggest thing is, it's not like it's parties or concerts up there. Anytime I'm up there, it's, you know, very quiet. Anytime left up there, it's very quiet. That's the big question.
Hello? I'm Dr. Pommelow Senior. And we've used the upper park lot to get the bikes ready for races. They're a great father, some of my experience. That's one of the best things that happened in my life is joining this club. And we're very respectful of all the neighbors up there. Thank you.
So I'd like to offer just an additional comment about that lot to show the longevity of that use. So I've got a couple of statements from the Gallo sons who lived in that, on that property since, this one is dated 1975. The other brother has dated his from 1979. And it says, "During that time, I observed camping in race support vehicles using the Central Cycle land, including off-rope. Neither I nor anyone else in my front, my family had any issues, any issues or complaints with the way that lot was being used on the CCC events." So I guess to finalize, one of our club members, who was a president in the late 70s, actually purchased that land from Roland Jensen's brother. I forget his name. And he bought that land in a house that goes with it. Subsequently purchased by Mr. Gallo. Subsequently purchased by us a year or so ago. When, when D. Bartolo, the president of the club at that time, bought that property, he let us use that for the purposes that we're talking about now in the late 70s. So with these letters, we think we have conclusive evidence that we have been using that property as we described for close to four decades. Thank you.
For the record, I'd like to, just Mercy, we talked about statements in here. I'd like to provide these statements to the... And these can be submitted if they're voluntary.
So Bill, those are actually the masters. I've included those in the handout?
Not all.
Okay.
It's in the handout, you said? Oh, as Exhibit B. Exhibit B, but I don't think Exhibit B has, again, for the record, where you record it. I don't think Exhibit B has all of those statements in it. So to ensure the record is clear, we want to make sure that you have all those statements.
You want these submitted for...
Yes, please. Those, as a group, become Exhibit C. At this point, I would reserve the opportunity to speak to you after. I assume you're going to want to hear from Mr. Bray.
Absolutely.
So once he's had a chance to say his things, I would just...
The African always has to ask.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor of granting this appeal? Okay, at this point, will you hear anyone denying in favor of sustaining the or denying the appeal? Mr. Chairman, if you speak a little louder? At this point in time, anyone who's in favor of denying the appeal has the right to speak.
Hi, I'm Ray Nurse Room. I am the property owner of Jason's that property in question. And I got a lot of discrepancy in what I said. After that property was not bought from my father as the original property. Only the lower lot was. This property was bought later on. I built my house there in '77. That property wasn't being used for nothing until then. And it was only for spectator parking. The club, through the years, started bringing bikes up there, campers up there. And we've been through this through all them years, through different selectmen and everything. They were agreed when they bought their property, it was always supposed to be spectator parking only for race things. And then they, like I said, progressively just started using it for everything else they wanted to. Through the years, we've been with, through multiple selectmen trying to fight this. And they talked to the club and they were supposed to stop doing this, but then they just continued doing it on and on as much as they pleased. And it's just gotten progressively worse and worse through the years. When they park in that field, like race bikes, they have race bikes within 30, 40 feet of my house. The fuel, the fuel from the exhaust comes in our house. We've got to keep our windows closed, campers at night, or the generators. It just, it just creates basically a health hazard throughout the property. And when you've got race bikes running back and forth, they're starting up, like I said, not far from our house. They were, they have work on their bikes, they have pressure washing their bikes. I have people pressure washing their bikes within like 30 feet of my well. This has been happening for all these years. They said, "We've worked with the town, Mr. Cunningham, Chuck and Vera by that. We've talked to various selectmen about what was supposed to go on." They said, "The original, the original order was spectator parking only for that lot." They said, "Now they're using it for camping, which is illegally used." And they're, they're bringing their commercial use of the lower lot up to a residential property, which is against the law. So that's what they've been doing after years and getting away with it because they don't want to follow any regulations. So they said, "It's, it's gotten to a point where it's gotten this bad." My son has, gets seizures from smell issues. Every time they have races and bikes up there and stuff, we've got to make sure he barely closes up because they'll end up with seizures because of the smells from the exhaust and everything else. So I'm just saying, this, this is been an issue for the last 40 years or whatever. It's not something that's just come up in the last few years. We've gone through it with Selectman Sweet many years ago. We've been multiple times, just Cunningham before. And it said, "This is an ongoing thing. It's nothing that's new. They weren't supposed to be using that in the first place for what they're using it for." And I just think if you're allowed them to do this, use it the way they want to. You're setting a precedent for any presidential property, and if they do whatever they want in their property, without any, you know, fault or anything happening. That's basically, you know, I, I actually belong to that club. I was one of, my father started this stuff by, you know, racing that. I was, I was a club member, I was a racer. So I got nothing against the club and racing. Just keep the race bikes and the campers off that upper residential property where that is a lot. That's all I'm asking.
Do you have the medical opinions as far as causes those seizures narrowing?
Well, I don't have it right. That's, that's my son, you know, he's, he goes to the doctor, so that's what it is. He gets, he gets seizures from smells. See, you've been told this. Yeah, right from when the Z and Earl. I've never been hurt. You know, I've been through this right from when the start. It's like I said, he has seizures on race days and stuff because of smells. It's like, but basically is, that's, you know, what I'm telling you. That's my opinion, right? It's that some of the stuff that's been coming up, like John was saying, that they bought that from my, my father. They bought the lower lot from my father, not that upper lot that was bought later on. It's that I built my house in '77. And my father was trying to buy that lot from D. Bartolo too, so that nobody else could use it. But apparently he had bought in the club and he sold it to the club. But like I said, that's supposedly only supposed to be spectator parking only. That's what, what the restrictions were laid out when they bought it because it wasn't worth it. If you'll use that for other uses, like I said, you're setting a precedent for anybody else to do the same thing with their properties. That's all I have to say.
How far away is your well? I didn't hear, I didn't hear that.
My well is probably like 15, 20 feet from the property line. And I've had campers, bikes right there, parked in the corner, pressure washing their bikes. And who knows what they're using.
29, 30, so that's...
Probably, you know, from here to that corner room or something.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, okay. I haven't had it tested, no. You know, they've been, lately, they've been trying to keep, you know, like I said, they are there trying somewhat to keep it away, but they, like I said, they're still using that property illegally. It shouldn't be used for, you know, they got race bikes going up, in and out of there all day long. And we're getting all the fumes from that. And they said the campers at night, they're not supposed to, they say they're supposed to stop the generators. They start them up at 2:00 in the morning. Nobody's around to stop them. Yeah. Okay? Thank you.
Looks like Kevin Cunningham, our first elect.
Kevin Cunningham. I just had a few things I wanted to say. One was, this was brought to my attention in 2020. I believe we spoke in the field. And we also were trying to come up with a compromise. We also spoke about it in 2021 and 2022. Usually what happens on a race weekend, when there's an issue that occurs, I get a call or an email. And so I'll go up there and take pictures and try to work things out. I think what's most important of the cease and desist, my opinion here is, if you take a look on a second bulleted area where it says during member events only, the upper lot may be used for camping, but members are to be asked to be respectful of the neighbors, maintain as much of the buffer of the property line as possible. When we were speaking each of the years, we were talking about what really is a buffer area. And what we were hoping would occur would be that that back road would not be used for camping because of the proximity to the well. And if you had a picture of the property, if you're online, they can approach and show you where it would be.
There's a well in Georgia. It was there in that area.
If you want to see that, well, it is, it's part of the apartment. It's just far right here in the middle of the park there. It's supposed to be behind that, it's a wall and everything. So I was hoping there could be some compromise that everybody could be able to live with. And I'm hoping that the compromise could be such as that back road not being used for camping. Because as you heard Mr. Chasman say, sometimes those generators run late and there's fumes there all the time. So between the well, worrying about the contamination or the fumes coming in all hours of the evening, that is a big concern. So I'm hoping that there was a consideration for a compromise. And that's what I've been talking about the last three years. But it has so far does not come to fruition because on race days when they do park in the back of the campers, that's when I get a call, come up and take pictures and see exactly, and also Ryan comes out and takes pictures as well. So that would be my concern. I hope maybe we can come to some compromise. If you're willing to discuss it again. But I really want to be able to, to be able to enforce it. I don't want getting called on a Friday or a Saturday or a Sunday to come up and take a look at it. It's just, it's very concerning. So with that, I would say you would like to either come up with a compromise or continue with the cease and desist.
Well, like a 15-minute recess to try and do this or what we...
I'm open to it. I'm open to that with the chairperson to Brian returning, if possibly our president has.
I would suggest, and I don't mean any disrespect, probably the chairperson should not be involved in that discussion. Because if it doesn't lead to something, then we compromise.
So you want 15 minutes recess?
That would be optimal.
It is now 7:45, so see if you can leave.
We're all on the recess.
Oh, if you want to go, you can. The whole work is still... I'd go with, I'm doing my homework. Yeah.
We're going to use up to three minutes and make this perfect and wait till exactly 8 o'clock. 8 o'clock. Resistance is over. We'll be back in a second. I don't know if you want to be on the speaker, I'd like to make a statement.
As chairman, for the record, I am a racehorse enforcement officer. At this point in time, I am withdrawing cease and desist.
For the record, to bring McCoy, this time we will be drawing our appeal, obviously, towards understanding, where they sit down and work out in the ring, and hopefully not involve you again.
Thank you very much. We're now going to see with the rest of the business on our agenda and thank all you people for attending this meeting. Thank you very much. Could I have your attention, please? Could you either be silent or exit the hall because we got the rest of the business? I took you guys up first, but we got to finish this and we can't hear. Thank you. How is it in the lot? Eight of beating gates, if you've got a dress for us, coming along in a year.
Make a motion to accept a bid to vote states as they are, on dates next year. This time I make a motion to nominate who officers will next year.
Would that be my direct nominee?
Other?
Have I? You have a second?
Yes.
Motion made, the other, as election votes, if I might, seconded by April.
I'd like to make a motion to elect the slate of officers. Slate of officers as follows would be Mike Morissette as secretary, Steve Walsh as vice chairman, and Frank Zach as chairman. I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. I believe that's for town elections, so that would be next year, wouldn't it?
No, election of officers could be, uh, four at a time. Every year, there's a election of officers.
Every year?
Yep. Motion to nominate a slate, a slate of three, instead of having to go through one, two, three. Read it again, please.
I'd like to make a motion to elect a slate of officers, the slate of officers as follows. Mike Morissette as secretary, Steve Walsh as vice chairman, and Frank Zach as chairman.
And Steve Walsh second in, in favor.
Aye.
How do you oppose that? Who would like to break this party up? What's that? Want to do a juror? Second by Catherine, second by April. Can you use a juror?